We're live.
You've still got two minutes and counting.
Sometimes this takes a minute, so we start a minute early. Now, it stalls like a stone.
All right, and it's 6:30. Lisa, you ready?
The time is 6:30. We'll now call this meeting to order. All right, first thing will be the invocation. Mr. Hodges, would you like to lead us in prayer?
Sure. The other thought, and thank you for today, and thank you for this time together to, best we possibly can, but I thank you for. Sorry, sorry, my apologies, also, I see. Thank you for state, national, elected officials. First responders. Good evening.
Amen. Folks, I just want to add one small thing to that. You know, some of us are veterans, and as a parent who has a son serving in the military, we received that call that frightens, frightens the mom from my son yesterday about, hey dad, we're okay, but you're going to see something on the news today. Pray for those families. My son is currently deployed over there with an air crew and another air crew, which you've seen on the news probably since yesterday, the American Air Force jet that went down in Taliban territory. That air crew and my son's air crew were friends that did an air show in Georgia to go before they were deployed. So please pray for our men and women that are overseas because it does get crazy. And it was sad to have that phone call or that text from my son that, hey, we're okay, but we lost friends today. So please pray for our military overseas. Well, if you will, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor, justice, and privacy. I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, as, as we say in every meeting, or as I say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. The only thing I ask everybody to do is please be respectful. You know, when you, when you do have the opportunity to come up for citizens' comments or the public hearing, let's just be respectful. Next up is citizens' comments. Before we start the citizens' comments, if you're here for the public hearing side of it over the 6.4 action item, if you could hold them until then, it would be great. So at this point, we will go to citizens' comments. I know Mr. Donigan had something on there. So Mr. Donigan, you will be first. You might be the only one in citizens' comments, but you will be first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council and neighbors. I'd like to offer some consideration among the agenda items that are being reported, council. The first one I'd like to bring up is the coenforcement issue. Hold the mic. Can you hit the button? I want to hear the response. Mike, there you go.
Thank you. Is the coenforcement issue, and as I understand it, the council is considering what we can do and the options of coenforcement that Chief Simmons has been trained in and is currently being considered to be utilized as a coenforcement, and there may be a concern in terms of the amount of time that he can spend on coenforcement. I just implore the council for the, I have personally gone to the city council, members of the council three times about code violations in my neighborhood, over two administrations. Okay? And always it's been, well, we've got to get a coenforcement officer in place. Well, if we have a coenforcement officer, even if he's restricted on the amount of time he can do, I say turn him loose.
Until, if the council is considering adding additional resources other than what we have, I say it's premature. Until the chief is able to get out there and conduct coenforcement, I don't see that it's premature. Let him come back and tell the council whether or not the additional resources are necessary. I don't think it will. So that's, that's the first thing that I'd like to bring up. The next thing I'd like to request or advise councils, suggest, and also recommend commission, that yes or no are not the most important for us, particularly as we're looking at the goal. I think that there are three other words that are much more important, and that's what, why, and how. And until the what, why, and how can be answered, it's premature to say yes or no. And then we have a lot of tools. We've got city staff. We've got a lot of things that we can do to determine the what, when, and how. So I'm going to go to the, to the development that we have that the council has considered. And I spent several hours talking to people within the city staff and other cities about this particular situation. It's not our obligation to ensure that the developers and property owners within the city are doing commercial retail and home product. It's our obligation, is city staff, P and Z, to ensure that the city, okay, is doing successfully. And we can't do that until we have good zoning ordinances and comprehensive plans and things like that. I know the staff report that Lisa provided, but we need to make this comment or something.
Hold on, Mike. Mike, hold on. Just a minute.
If this kind of city is in a financial.
Position to fund the project. We're talking about the sewer project. The availability of a wastewater line on 205 specifically at the intersection of 205 and 550 have potential to spur commercial development, forward generating additional ad valour in property sales tax and tax revenue to the city. Until we know what we want for commercial and retail development, it's way, way premature to try to establish it. We're going to get a sewer. The sewer is going to be implemented for the benefit of the city and doing what Lisa has prescribed in here. But until we know what we would like to have as commercial and retail, what's the most desire is to the city and to the vision the city is premature to, to, to select. So what I'm employing to the planning and zoning into the council is to determine, visit with the property owners that own that property now that are willing to do a planned development, invest our time and effort and resources, but don't say yes till we know what, when, and how. Okay? The sewer will come, and we can ensure the sewer will come. So instead of trying to, as the staff report said, the city's in a good financial position to fund the product. Well, I don't think we need to deviate and, and, and make it financially more attractive for the property owners or the investors to do their deal. Let's see what they want to do, how they're going to do it, why they're going to do it, and then we can determine a yes or no. Thank you very much.
All right, is there any questions? There's no one else that's still rushing for citizens' comments? At 6:39, citizens' comments are closed. All right, we'll move on to 5.1. Consider approval of minutes for January 14th, 2020 city council meeting. All in favor of motion for approval of the minutes? I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion over the minutes from the previous council meeting? If there is no discussion, all in favor, aye.
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 Show that unanimous. And folks, as you see, we do have one open council seat tonight. He is a first responder. He had to work tonight. That's why we're running short tonight. We will move on to 6.1, discussion and action considering a request by Clifford and Rhonda Rogers seeking approval of a final plat of 4.25 acres part of Rockwall Cat parcel ID number 46603 WW Ford survey tract 39-8 generally located at 1,000 Pullen Road. Carl, you have the staff report on that? Is that correct? You'll push the button so that Mike will come on, please.
Someone out in the, in the social media world might want it, right? Carl Crowley, 2201 Main Street. The request before you on this item is a final plat for, basically it's two lots. It was a 39 acre tract that divided up into about five acres and thirty, whatever, 34 of the remainder. The idea is the five acres which has frontage on Pullen, both of our frontage on Pullen, well, a new house we built at that location. There's an existing house on the remainder 34 acre lot, and that'll remain in place. Staff's recommending approval, and P and Z recommend approval 5 to 0.
All right, all in favor of motion?
I make a motion to approve the request by Clifford and Rhonda Rogers for the, of their final plat for 4.25 acres part of Rockwall Cat parcel ID number 46603.
All right, good motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion, council? No. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right, show that unanimous. All right, moving on to 6.2, discussion and action regarding the resolution approving a chapter 383, a grant granted between the city of McAllen, June and Bloomfield Homes Gulf East. It's been requested by our city commissioner, Ms. Lisa.
Aye. Yes, Mayor. The city was approached by Bloomfield Homes, offering a chapter 380 agreement. Chapter 380 agreements are economic development agreements designed to promote economic development and to stimulate business and commercial activity pursuant to chapter 380 of the local government code. Home builders like Bloomfield must purchase building materials from various suppliers for the projects. And obviously, McLendon-Chisholm, we don't have building suppliers in our town. Typically, the point of sale of these materials is where the sales tax money is generated, benefiting the city where the items are purchased, rather than the city where the items are being used or stored. This agreement allows Bloomfield Homes and the city to partner, allowing Bloomfield to opt out of paying sales tax to suppliers on building materials, but instead purchase items using a Texas Direct payment permit that generates local use tax revenue for our city, rather than having those funds go to our neighboring cities where they would normally be purchased. There is a spreadsheet. Let me give you an example. In this particular case, Bloomfield is under contract to purchase 50 lots, with an eventual plans to purchase 200 lots in the city limits over a period of time. There's a spreadsheet in your packet that breaks down potential benefit to the city, as well as potential benefit to Bloomfield. The use tax generated is collected by the comptroller's office and deposited into the city's account. Twice a year, the city would split funds, collected with 40% going to Bloomfield, 60 to the city. Over a period of 10 years, the estimated benefit to the city is between $150,000 at today's home prices, for the average home price, with potential to be as much as $171,000 considering inflation over time. The chapter 380 agreement allows both Bloomfield and the city to benefit. Without the agreement, neither Bloomfield nor the city would see those funds. They would stay in the town wherever that point of sale might have been. The city has a similar agreement in place with Highland Homes that we did maybe a year and a half ago, and to date, we've gained about $25,000 in revenue. Mr. Doug Duffy is here. He's a CPA, and he kind of specializes in these economic development agreements, and he's here to kind of present this on behalf of Bloomfield. And he can answer any questions, or maybe give you some more detail if you'd like.
Thank you, Lisa. I've, I've had the privilege of coming before this council and the prior council for two separate agreements, one for Highland, and it's been in place for almost two years now. But I think it, it's a really good example of how a home builder can work with a city and generate new money for a city where they're building new homes and where their customers are going to live, as opposed to benefiting the location where their suppliers are located. I thought Lisa did a great job of explaining that that tax is typically going to Dallas or Fort Worth or wherever the suppliers are located, not to the city of McLendon-Chisholm. And the only way that happens is if they get a direct payment permit and actually convert a sales tax to a use tax, and all use taxes are destination-based. So this allows them, I think, a great opportunity to, to prove, and it's a very performance-driven agreement, where if they don't generate new money for the city, and they don't give you a copy of their confidential tax returns showing exactly how much they benefited the city of McLendon-Chisholm, you owe them nothing. So it's, it's pretty risk-free on the city's behalf, and I consider it something where it's, it's new money. It's about, estimated about $571 per house. You multiply that, you know, by 200 houses, and that's based on today's cost. As the price of the materials goes up, and so does the local tax revenue. So I think it's a great opportunity for the city to work with a home builder and generate new money that they wouldn't have otherwise. So if you have any questions, answer them.
Just a couple of questions, sir. What is the Bloomfield agreement as far as the person, so, I'm sorry, the existing agreement? Which one's the existing agreement?
With Highland Homes?
Highland. So is there 60/40 as well?
It is.
Okay, so it's the same, basically the same terms?
It is.
And Lisa, that didn't bring on any additional accounting costs on the city's side or any of that, is that correct?
Very minimal. They actually provide us a breakdown of what's being collected by the comptroller, and then our accountant verifies that. So I talked to him, and it really takes probably 30 minutes or so to do it each time we make a submission. So it's minimal.
And Nathan, just so you know, I mean, Bloomfield has to file by law, has to file monthly tax returns, but they've agreed to do semi-annual grants, so that it's that much less administrative time on the city's behalf. So that even though they're going to file 12 tax returns, they're only going to send you two grant requests a year.
And they're required to do that, just by the way, to get anything back. So in essence, the city makes money any time they make money, is really what it is. And for the most part, you don't go into business to lose money or not make money. So the incentive they have to run their business and be successful benefits the city from that standpoint. Until they do, like you pointed out, until they, you know, file certain things and let us know, until they file, like the tax certificate, use tax certificates, you're not going to know how much they're entitled to. So there are going to be ways to keep track of things and know what's going on, and in, like you put it, the safeguards there, that's how they get their money back from this, when they file the use tax certificates, the tax returns, et cetera, et cetera, and there's a track record. So that's the risk-free element that you mentioned earlier.
One question for Lisa. From what I understand, it's a 10-year agreement, but both parties can terminate the agreement if they need to. Is that the right of that?
I believe that's correct. Is that correct, Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, there's, there's notices provided for both parties, but I think the only reason that Bloomfield asked for a 10-year agreement is that they, once they go through this process and take over the responsibilities, they'd like to do it for any new developments that they have, including, you know, beyond the 50 lots they currently have, to go ahead and expand that and do it more frequently, but use a consistent process. And, I mean, you know, the only reason the city would potentially not want to do it is if you've got a big lumber company that was going to generate that tax already, and you just don't have that yet.
All right, any more questions, Paul?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the chapter 38 grant granted between two divisions of the local government.
All right, good motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a motion and a second? Council, do we have any discussion?
No.
All right, if there's no discussion, all in favor, aye.
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 We'll move on to 6.3. Presentation of Rockwall County Commissioner Dennis Bader for our campus subdivision regulation related matters. Mr. Bader?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council and, and staff. My request to be here this evening was to inform the council of a complete rewrite that Rockwall County is going through with its subdivision regulations. Municipalities have ordinances that govern your development of subdivisions. Counties have regulations, and they are quite different, and much more stringent if you work with a city's ordinance than if you are looking at what a county can enforce and do that. The interlocal agreement that we have with, gives you a copy of our regulations, and so you have accepted the responsibility of any developments that are petitioned for within your ETJ areas, that you would take the lead in seeing that you research both your ordinances and our regulations, and then whichever our agreement is, whichever is the more stringent of the two is what you would enforce. Recently, in fact, it's almost been a year ago, I guess, there was a development that was presented to the county on Poetry Road. And that Poetry Road was about an 80-acre tract. It was originally presented with like 200 homes that were going to be built on that tract of land. During our review of the subdivision and the development as it was laid out to us, it was brought to our attention that we had, in our regulations, that you had 50-foot setbacks. And we were under the impression that that was per the government code. We could do that. The developer filed a lawsuit against the county based on our setbacks, and so in review of what we had, the general code says that if it's a major thoroughfare road, you can enforce 50-foot. But if it's a neighborhood-type street, 30 feet was the number that you had. Well, the lawsuit had been filed, and so we worked with the developer and, and got an agreement that the developer would rescind or pull down his lawsuit if we would give a preliminary approval to that particular project. Preliminary projects are somewhat more in line with, do you have all the documents that you are presenting to staff? And, and that's about all that covers. Then it's followed with engineering studies that go about, and that's when you really kind of get into the meat of the width of the streets and utilities and so forth that was in there. So we had that particular incident happen with us, and so as a result of that, the county then said, you know, it's been probably well over 10 years since we had gone back and really taken a hard look at the regulations, and we wanted to do that. Not long ago, a previous council here in McLendon had worked out an agreement with the city of Rockwall to take over some of the ETJ areas that were under your responsibility. So I want to tell you that, that, and I think some of you are already aware of this, that D.R. Horton picked up a contract that had been through your city several years ago and was approved by TCEQ, which was over, I forget the name of the, help me, Mike, if you remember the name of the, in Arizona.
UEG.
Pardon? UEG, yes, correct, thank you. That had all the approval from TCEQ to develop about 1,200 acres that were in that particular area. That land swap of ETJs then went over to city of Rockwall. D.R. Horton came to me and asked me to take a look at the development plans that they had. Their initial proposal was about 3,000 homes on that 1,200 acres that they wanted to ask us for approval for. So I, I quickly told them, hey, we don't, we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Rockwall, so you must go to Rockwall and work with them. They commented at the time that they had been to Rockwall and that they were trying to work out some issues about law enforcement and fire that they would have to have in that particular development. And at the point of time that they were talking to Rockwall, I think Rockwall had said, hey, we don't have much interest in providing those services to you. So they come back to me, and I say, no, 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 sorry. You need to go back to Rockwall and work with them on your approval. When they go back to Rockwall, Rockwall then begins to, they, they knew that we were in this rewrite, and Freezing Nichols is the engineering firm that we have contracted with to rewrite our subdivision rules. And they, the city of Rockwall says, hey, because the county is revising its regulations and we have an interlocal agreement with them, the city of Rockwall instituted a moratorium on subdivisions that would take place in their ETJ area. Counties do not have that ability. Cities do. Counties do not.
Sir, is it, is it home rule and general rule cities that have that ability?
Pardon?
Home rule and general rule cities have that?
You would need to ask your council that question. I, I'm not sure of that answer. But I, but I do, I do know that there is a distinction about what municipalities can do and what counties can, can do as far as a moratorium goes. Freezing Nichols has advised us, we, we met a little over a week ago, and to give us a status of where, where they were in our rewrite, we, we first did a diagnostic review of our regulations, and they went completely through and pointed out a lot of things. They interviewed each of us individually and said, what would you like to, to change in, in your particular document? We're, we're looking at a lot of different things that may include some storm drains, curbs, a lot of other things that the county may want to enforce in their regulation or in our new regulations coming up. So that moratorium has been placed, and that project, there's been some communication back and forth between D.R. Horton and Rockwall in that. in that typically, I think in the past, they've been able to go ahead and give them engineering reports and say, would you go ahead and look at our engineering reports and give us approval on those, because that typically takes a couple of months, and we'd like to go ahead and get that approval during this moratorium, so that once it is lifted, then we can immediately, you know, go into a bill-type project. The City of Rockwall has refused to do that by saying, we don't know what's going to happen with the county's regulations when they come back. And so we're looking at the May or June timeframe, when we anticipate those to be complete. I believe that there is a, or we may even be having like a public hearing so that we can get that information out. And then we would certainly immediately upon revision and approval of those documents, those regulations, subdivision regulations, then each of us will be going to our associated communities and presenting that to you, having your staff review those, and then we would need to initiate a new interlocal agreement. I'll tell you the story about Rockwall because I just want you to know what is going on. That's kind of a, I don't know whether that's a front door, back door, side door over there where the area is, you know, it's off 548, and just, I think, past the Tate Farms over there. There are a lot of concerns that we have, which it's not about us, it's about City of Rockwall overseeing that. But transportation and infrastructure there is a key issue. We've got a, we were able to recently, not long ago, do some upgrades to Edwards Road, which is in that particular area, but it only comes to league from 550 back around to there, so it kind of goes back into a dirt road from there back on over to 548. So a lot of things that we need to do in that particular area. As a side note, I'd like to, just if I may, kind of give you a little bit of my opinion, this is not county, but pids and muds come about in, within municipalities or within unincorporated areas or ETJs as a result of the community not being able to provide water. That is the thing that I would encourage the city to take a look at, is to position yourself to be able to get into the water business, and I think that would give you a lot more leverage, certainly within your community, and if for some reason there are, there's certainly other areas of ETJ that you have, that you would be able to, I think, more effectively work with subdivisions that are in those particular areas. In the unincorporated, we don't do water. We don't have access to it, we can't do that. So we're subject to those particular areas coming. And with the recent changes in legislation in this last 86th session that kind of ties your hands as far as being able to annex property out there, you know, individuals that are out there must, as I understand it, petition you to come out and to take them in. So, you know, there's a, I think, a renewed look, and we're beginning to see in a lot of the unincorporated areas, a lot of development that's beginning to start up. And we know that that has been coming. This particular 1,200 acres is contiguous with Mr. Hinckley, who's been, I think, before you and several times before, has about 2,000 acres there. I spoke with him the other day. I think that there's, there could be an opportunity that the two of them, D.R. Horton and Mr. Hinckley, may work out some kind of deal where a package plant or whatever, you know, usage of the septic system might go on Glenn's property over there. They're working together on that. But just want to make you aware of the regulation that we're redoing and give you notice of things that are going to be happening around your area and give you a heads-up on that. So if there's no other, or if there is any question, I'd be glad to try to answer those. The moratorium that I spoke of is specific to an ETJ area. I don't know if I said that or not. You can't put a moratorium within your corporate city limits. You can only do it in that particular area.
So City of Rockwall's moratorium, is it going through June until the county figures out? What's the timeline?
They are waiting on us to complete our study. There could be some timelines that they're going to have to move on that, but they know that we're looking, May or June, to wrap it up and be able to come back to you and ask you to redo that interlocal agreement with us. If that's, if that's all right, one other thing, Mayor, real quickly, and I think this isn't all-related items that goes along with this, and that is open space. And we had today a meeting in our commissioner's court, and we have voted to bring that issue back up, and what we would like to do is make that open space area, which deals with all these developments around everything, to add that to the road consortium that we have. So we would begin like with emergency management at, what time is that, Mayor? Five? Yeah, 5:00, and then 6:00 would be the road consortium, and then we want to put an open space consortium right after that at 7:00. So I'll be getting back to you, asking you to announce who you would like to have on your council attend those meetings. So thank you, and appreciate the opportunity to visit with you.
I did, I asked, there was been reference to, do we have the ability as a general city to put a moratorium?
Oh, typically generally normally what moratoriums are used for?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, but also, when you do it, it's, when development is happening faster than regulations, and it's like, wait a minute, we've got a duty under 51001, that is local government code, to do what's best for the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Now, with all due respect to the county commissioner, I would request council to let me look at the interlocal. A couple of years ago, 242.001A was changed, and so the state law says that a county and a city must, there's no, there's no choice, there's no option. City and a county must get together and come to an agreement where either the city is responsible for plating an ETJ, county is responsible for it, or you basically like two warring countries, you give up the ETJ and certain people are responsible, or the fourth win, and I'm not sure about how it was, I think, how the county commissioner phrased it, with all due respect, might not currently be commiserate with the law. It does not say you get to pick and choose whose regulations. It's you get one set of regulations, one set of plating regulations, development regulations, land use regulations, et cetera, et cetera, for the ETJ. Not that you go, okay, well, which is more appropriate, use the cities or use the counties. So it sounds like maybe when the interlocal was done, probably a while back is what I'm guessing, right, it sounds like it was perfectly valid and legal then, but portions of it probably are not consistent now with state law, and that may be.
Yeah, and counsel, that's what we're going to address.
Okay, good, that's, and that was going to be the next thing, I think that's maybe what he's saying. So, yeah, expect that, I would assume, to come back at a later date.
So we'll get the restrictions, and then Lisa will work with you on the interlocal agreement, is that how that works?
Yeah, we can have our council work with yours.
So how long does it take to get the interlocal agreement?
Well, the body of it hasn't, there's been some things that more or less, more likely, and I haven't seen it, but typically generally normally these situations, they need to be updated, okay? That provision that he referenced, in my opinion, is no longer legally valid because the state, like I said, 242001 is giving, we've got four choices, so we have options, but we're limited to those four options. So it's about what the county commissioners and the city council can agree to in terms of what's going to happen in the ETJ.
It sounds like the interlocal will be the easy part. The harder part is waiting on Freezing Nichols to come back with the results, and then the commissioner's going through it and coming to some conclusion, and then actually coming back to us. So it's just a process.
Right.
All right, we'll move on to 6.4, which is the public hearing regarding a request by Monstel Hone, and I've got a script out, a series of questions from GB, General Business, Plan Development, General Business, by T. Black, and by Rockwall County, from P.A. 100122. Generally located south of FM 550 and State 205. Before we actually get into it, I've got a couple of things that I want to say, just we'll do that. We're moving into 6.4, which is a public hearing, and then 6.5, discussion actually regarding the application. Folks, before we hear a staff report on this, are we up to the public hearing? See if we can continue to look around town about this side. I want to offer a few reminders. There are several procedures involved. In order to build on a property, including zoning, plating, and issuance of a building permit, each has its own set of regulations. What is on the table tonight for consideration is a zoning change request only. Zoning is land use and is regulated by Chapter 211 of the Local Government Code and by our city ordinances. Zoning regulations are designed to encourage appropriate land use that is compatible and suitable for an area. Other considerations include any street congestion, securing safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promoting health, safety, and general welfare, providing adequate light and air, preventing overcrowding of land, avoiding undue concentration of population, facilitating adequate provision of transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other public requirements, and zoning must comply with the comprehensive plan. Procedures, P&amp;Z, here's a zoning change request that is a recommending body for council. P&amp;Z makes a recommendation to council after determining if the proposed land use is suitable for the area and if it complies with the comprehensive plan. Council then weighs that information with information presented at the council meeting and makes a decision. Again, zoning considerations are about land use. Business success or failure is not our concern. That is the business owner's concern. If a land use is approved, such as retail, we cannot discriminate on which business is allowed if it meets our city's, our requirements. We only determine if the use is appropriate or not. Technical or engineering requirements are addressed in the plating process, not the zoning process. Again, tonight, we are only hearing a zoning case. Prior to issuance of a building permit, the building official will determine if the building permit application conforms to the appropriate zoning regulations, the plat was approved, and will the review, will review a building permit application to determine if building codes and local ordinances are met and perform inspections during each phase of the construction process. Okay. First off, before we go into the public hearing, Carl?
Carl, what you have before you today is requests of a, it's, I think we decided we're going to call it the south corner of 550 and 205, because we didn't know if it was southeast or southwest, and I think we just said south. It's on the same side of 205 across 550 from the Sonic. Now everyone knows where it is. It's approximately an acre and a half. It's presently zoned GB General Business. General Business allows retail, commercial, office uses, 35 feet in height, has certain setback requirements. It is restricted probably more than anything else in the zoning ordinance under the commercial development standards, and I'll get into that in a little while. What the request for is for a planned development district for General Business rules, basically is the, is the underlying set of rules. A planned development district sets rules for this piece of property. There'll be no other piece of property in McLendon-Chisholm that will have those same rules. In this case, it is before you as a conceptual planned development district. The conceptual plan is in your docket material. That, they can either apply as a conceptual planned development district or a developed plan, a detailed development plan. While this is written as a conceptual, they will have to come back at a later date before, and how it's written in this case, before the P&amp;Z and you with a detailed development plan and elevations. The regular zoning today, General Business, if they had a plat that you mentioned, and their uses that they complied with, and complied with all the rules, they would not have to come back before any other body to get a building permit and can start construction. So that's one additional thing that has been added in this planned development district. One of the other items that's really added in this is we took some of the uses that are in the General Business district that probably aren't appropriate for this intersection, which is a prominent intersection here in town. The list, the uses that have been restricted are listed there. Automotive uses that really aren't appropriate, pawn shops, things of that nature have been prohibited in this. That may have either been allowed or allowed with an S U P, and now they've just been prohibited. One use that has been added to this by right that is not currently allowed in the General Business zoning is a restaurant use. And the reason we thought about a restaurant use in this case is the S U P in this case would basically bring a site plan back for you to review, and if they're coming back with a development plan and elevations, it's the same as if they came back with that S U P. So in this case, instead of making them go through the zoning process again to bring you the same site plan they were going to bring you with this case, in this proposed PDA, restaurant use is allowed by right. However, I put in some other provisions in there to require, to make the restaurant more of a McLendon-Chisholm restaurant, and that's, if there's such a thing. Require some outdoor seating, have some minimum and maximum sizes for restaurants so that you get something that is probably more of, less likely to be a fast food restaurant. It's limited on its size. It couldn't be McDonald's, not that I think McDonald's would go there, just because of the size. The other, the real big issue that they've asked for besides those things is those changes to the commercial development standards. The commercial development standards today allow a, require a minimum of a building of 2,500 square feet for the first floor, single floor, and a maximum floor area of any given building on the site, you could have multiples of those, of 6,000 square feet. And then the length of any wall of that building, be it 2,500 or 6,000, is 80 linear feet. So this provision eliminates the 80 feet of a wall. It leaves a minimum 2,500 square foot, so you won't get small little kiosk-type buildings. It does eliminate that 6,000-square-foot maximum of any single-story building. In its place, I added, they requested those, I added that any given tenant in a building can't be more than 5,000 square feet. So you wouldn't get a large tenant if they built more than 6,000 square feet. I told P&amp;Z to think of 5,000 square feet, what's 5,000? A Walgreens, CVS, they're all the same, they're on every corner, right, is about 5,000 square feet. So that would give you about, that's the size of that sort of building. Otherwise, the heights regulations would remain the same. As mentioned, there's a conceptual plan, that's not the conceptual plan, don't look at that. He's got a development plan, but he's calling that the conceptual plan. What you have before you is a conceptual plan, it's in the docket material. It sets setbacks, in this case, 25 feet versus 20 feet, which is in there today for General Business, gives you a little more chance to put some landscaping in there. in there. Um, it's restricted on how much parking you can have between the front yard, between the building and the, and the facade. Um, it, it still requires the building standards that are in the ordinance minus, we've had this discussion before, minus the state law changes on the building materials. It still requires that type of architecture with a base, a middle, and a, and a top to it. Um, it just doesn't specify what those materials are. Um, and we're talking zoning today, so I'll leave that as that. Um, otherwise, um, staff recommended approval of it. Does comply with the comprehensive plan, which calls for, for General Business in this area. This is somewhat restrictive on some uses, uh, allows a little more flexibility in the, in the development of it. Uh, P and Z recommended denial. I believe the vote was three to one, as I recall. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What was, um, P and Z's rationale for, uh?
Well, the chairman's here, he may be able to answer that better than I can, but I'll, I'll, if you want to ask him, that's fine.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, at this time, it is seven nineteen, six point four. I'm going to open the public hearing. Um, Mr. Dev, you wait patiently, so, or would you do it first?
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Did you want to hear the applicant first, so everyone would have? Would you like to hear the applicant first, so you, he, everyone can have benefit of what he'd like to present?
Just a second.
And then maybe the P and Z chair, and then, just a suggestion.
Hello again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we purchased this lot a couple of months ago, uh, for retail and commercial developments here at the corner of the five fifty and two oh five, and we are here today for the zoning change for the restaurant and outstanding, uh, area for the restaurants. And like Carl mentioned, this is a two building concept. We're just providing one for the restaurant, the other one for the retail and mixed use. And no other tenant going to be, uh, larger than five thousand square foot.
Any questions?
Any questions here? All right, thank you.
All right. Now, the seven point one, are there any?
Good evening, I'm Bev Stevens. I live at two seventy-nine Partridge Drive. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, even though you took away half of my comments. But that's okay. I guess my biggest question to you is, why would you agree to this zoning change before you have an economic development plan in place? You have a committee, you've had a committee for quite a while that has been working on this. This zoning change is going to live with this property until you change it again, which is costs, in staff time, in legal fees, in your time, which you can't put a dollar on. You guys are invaluable. So I am against this zoning change, and I hope you will listen to what I say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Uh, my name is Robert Rody, and I serve as the chairman of the McLendon-Chisholm Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, I have been asked to provide some background information as to the majority decision to deny the request for a zoning change from General Business, uh, which contained fixed definitions, uh, for applicant and city to a planned development district for General Business, uh, that allows and affords some flexibility for applicant and city at our January sixteenth, twenty twenty meeting. Uh, this process was a two-part agenda item consisting of a public hearing and a discussion and action segment. Uh, we heard from a citizen from Chisholm Crossing, section four, who was concerned about the proposed development as it would impact Cattle Baron Street and their community. Uh, also, uh, a lot of information we felt was superfluous to the planned development, uh, land use change request. We saw a conceptual plan, which is totally different from what was up on the screen. Uh, we did not have, we did not see any of these, uh, drawings or, or, uh, any of that at, at our meeting as well. And we felt that the plans were somewhat ambiguous in how it related to the change request, and that the information eventually led to probably a premature discussion centered on future construction, uh, some possible tenants, deed restrictions, uh, sewer options, and we also heard some input from the applicant architect, engineer, as well as our staff. Uh, one of our commissioners even viewed current other projects by the applicant and deemed that these would not work in our community. Uh, we heard assumptions, and most of the commission was not comfortable relying on assumptions and hearing phrases such as "our intention" or "that's up for debate." Uh, I admit that the commission, uh, perhaps veered somewhat off course and let this impact the decision on the issue of land use change. Uh, I also believe these led to a decision reached. Uh, it created a doubt, and some information was not definitive enough. Uh, it lacked structure, so rather than proceed and recommend to city council for approval, the commission chose the side of caution, knowing that the applicant could resubmit the request with information directly related to that land use change, or that it would come before council and a clearer discussion that ensures the validity of that land use change request would occur. So that is kind of the background of our decision. And it was mentioned by, by the planner that, uh, there was a three to one vote, and that is true. Uh, there were five of us at the meeting. Uh, I delayed my vote in case I had to break the tie. I didn't want to influence anyone. Uh, and then, uh, when the vote was three to one, uh, to deny the request, I, I gavelled it done, and, and my vote wouldn't have mattered either way. But that's why there was a three to one, and there were five commissioners there. Any questions from council?
Did you guys let them know what your concerns were at the time where they could come back and clear up?
During the discussion and during the, the open meeting and the presentation, uh, the commissioners raised those questions and concerns, and that's when we had, we got the comments, uh, from applicant and staff, that it's our intention and, and it's also up for debate. And those were some things that we had some difficulty with, um, not knowing what those intentions were. And like I said, the, the plat that we received, or the conceptual plan that we received, was totally different than what you're looking at there, as well as any of the other artwork was, was not included in their presentation.
But it seemed, seems to me, though, that going from the, uh, General Business to the, um, planned development, the big change is the, the restaurant, putting in the restaurant. And so was that not, uh, described to you?
No.
This is what, this is what we had. You were not communicating with, um...
Okay. But didn't come up and describe it?
If, and, if something that, uh, from the deed restrictions as well as certain of the other consequences, that this would be a viable or a possible business, that it would not be by, due to the, 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 uh, and, and, uh, as you said, as you mentioned, uh, showing through us.
Robert?
This, yeah, this is from last meeting.
And I, I saw, I first saw this, uh, I guess this afternoon, mid-afternoon, three, four-ish, when, when Lisa was kind enough to, uh, uh, send me an email, uh, with this, uh, information in it. So that was the first time that I have, or the commission has saw, has saw that particular stuff.
And, and council, you just might want to know, um, these are preliminary drawings up here, and I'm not sure if the architects wanted to come up and maybe describe the slides, um, but these four drawings were provided today, and they are preliminary, so, um, they would still have to bring these back at a later date. But, um, I think they wanted after P and Z to provide you at least some additional information about where they were headed as far as design.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, sir. Yes, um, we had just finished these drawings, what you see here, uh, yesterday. And, um, and as an architect, when the, when the owner tells me, hey, Dave, what can you do at this site? Well, certainly, I'm going to have to calculate how much ratio building area to parking lots can we do? How can we maximize? And, and, and this is what we came up with. Uh, subject to, to, uh, and I think the last time we were here, uh, there was confusion as to what it's going to look like. You know, I'm concerned, you know, uh, we just don't want a, a typical strip center on here. So, you know, we, we kind of went back to, uh, concentrating in the old town look and, and making the building facade with different smaller facades on it. Um, and, and of course, no, this wasn't done last week or the week before, you know, and, but we, as our team, inside team, we need to find out, is this is viable for us as far as construction costs, site costs? It, does it work? You know, how much building can we get on there? How much, uh, parking can we get on there? We don't know until we do these drawings, until we, 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 we figure out what these drawings are. And, and of course, we didn't know two weeks ago as far as, you know, what are the, uh, details of this? And we're not there yet. I mean, this is very conceptual, and this is an image of, you know, what the owner wants to do with this building. Okay? And, um, it's very preliminary, okay? Uh, and, and things might change according to building regulations, codes, engineering, civil engineering, uh, structural, and things are going to change, landscape, so, um, and there's where we are right now. By no means this is a, a conceptual, I mean, it is conceptual plan, but it's not, it's just for us to understand what the building might look like, what we're, uh, imaging to, and, you know, heights, uh, parking counts, uh, access to the building, to the, to the site, and that's basically what we're showing here. In a better, I guess, understanding as far as, uh, if we see the site plan, uh, the color site plan, you could, you know, see how much landscape there is beyond, uh, the property lines. And, um, and certainly, what we're trying to do is just maximize the site, you know, maximize the building and parking to the site. And that's basically it. And it was going to change, I mean, believe me, it's going to change from here. Once we get to the nuts and bolts, you know, with, uh, building permitting, like I said, building permitting, our civil engineers, um, working with the city, it's, it's going to change. But our image, our character of the building is what we basically see here. And that's all we want to show is the character of the building and the way this, the, the parking lot's going to work and what we can do with the buildings. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, do we have any other citizens that, uh, in Congress, or...
Yes, once again, Mike Donigan, twenty-six twenty Ridge Lake Lane. I, I appreciate the, the developers working hard to, to come up with a concept that, um, that the city can, uh, would like and embrace. I, my recommendation is the count, we, we have a capable planning and zoning commissioner and a, and a, and a, and hopefully, you know, a dedicated and committed planning and zoning commission. I think it's, it behooves the city to allow the developer to work with planning and zoning before, I know we're talking about zoning change, but when you get to this level, I think there's a layer, and there's a reason why we've got a layer there, that it's got to go through P and Z before it ever gets to council. Uh, and, and I really recommend that. And I also would, would suggest to our planner and our city staff, and I appreciate all the work, and I know we, we, we need to embrace good commercial and retail development, but once again, I reiterate, we can, we, let's plan, let's discuss, let's think it through, let's weigh our options. If we do this, what happens? It's a lot of work. Can't change that, but, but it can be very rewarding and fruitful work. I also ask y'all to consider, uh, moratoriums on commercial and retail development, or an overlay district until we're able to provide more guidance to investors that come into our community. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other citizens that want to make comments? If not, it's seven thirty-four, public hearing is closed.
I have just a couple of comments. I mean, I'm, I'm very pro-small business, you know, again, to repeat my history of growth here, I'm a small business owner, private practice here in, in Rockwall, fifteen years now. Having said that, we have P and Z in position for a reason. Um, you know, I, I want to see our community grow, grow the right way, but, uh, at this point, without, uh, P and Z in, in a voting, voting in favor of any change, I'm not, I'm not, I'm going with P and Z at this point.
I guess, I guess my concern is if we, uh, if we deny, if we, you know, continue to deny the request, we will not have as much leverage with what is constructed there because it will be general, general business. And with the planned development, if correctly I'm wrong, we'll have a little more say in, in how things are.
It is actually more restrictive than the General Business zoning that's currently in place.
So does that mean that Mr. Longing would just flat the property and get a building permit then?
Yes.
Or the burn use of your own business?
Yes.
What would you add to that? Yeah, the conceptual plan is nice, uh, but my, my concern is the fact that the first time we heard about this project, uh, we were told, this council was told about the restaurant, and P and Z did not get that information. I would like all bodies to be able to have the same information so that everybody can make the same decision at the same time. So the fact that they came to us, told us about the restaurant, the possibility of swap building, and then after two meetings, then they go to P and Z, and they withhold that information either because it was forgotten or whatnot. I just want all bodies to be able to see the whole picture, so that way everybody can make the decision on the same thing. Right now, property seems to be in too much of a fluid state. I'd like to see more static, that way everybody can see everything that's happening at the same time, on the side of P and Z.
Mayor, may I interject?
Yes, Mayor.
Um, although these rendering drawings were not in, in the P and Z packet, um, the staff report did show a restaurant and gave the square footage, the maximum square footage. So the details were in there, but you would have to read through that staff report. Uh, there just weren't pictures.
I'm just going off of what the commissioners say.
Is it something we have to do tonight, or can they go back to P and Z with what they have now? I mean, what we have now? And, and go back and, I mean, I'm just asking.
I think maybe we want to ask the planner and/or our city attorney what that process would be. I've never actually seen that happen, so I don't know if they would need to start over with a new application, uh, or if we can kick it back.
My concern if you change the request too much, when you started, they started the application with X request. If you change it too much, I also have to stress this very, very, because I got to watch out for me. My job is to look at it, if some, the situation could go bad one time out of a thousand, I have to look at that, because if I don't mention that, nine hundred and ninety-nine
have to look at that, because if I don't mention that, nine hundred and ninety-nine times, everything is gonna be fine, but the one time it goes bad, you already look at me and go, why didn't you tell us that? So my concern here is that, several things, you've got some expressed opposition to it from the public, that's number one. Number two, you have a situation where if you, from the beginning, they fill that application, made a request for X. If council wants to say, hey, look, we're okay with some of it, but you probably need to change it to do this, this, or that, or whatever, but it changes it to Y, so you basically transmogrify that request, my concern there is, it's not the same request, and it does have to go back to the, now that's looking at the worst-case scenario, but I feel like that's what I have to look at. My feeling is, if you change it to, but I don't mean necessarily change it, well, this really should be twenty-five instead of twenty, okay, but if you're like, look, this use, let's add this other use, do this, now you're getting to a situation where I think they have changed the original request too much to make it a different request, which means notice wasn't made of that request, public hearing wasn't noticed for that particular request, and it should be treated as a whole new request. Also, the last thing, from a technical standpoint, I don't know if our ordinances permit us, once it gets to council, to send it back to P and Z with recognition. Typically, the only rule that's covered in the city's zoning rules, how they do it.
I can see it starting over for, to be clean, but I don't think the request has actually changed. I think they provided some additional information that would be helpful, and I think maybe we could express to P and Z and, you know, emphasize more the land use and if it went back, but the request hasn't really changed. All the things that were in the P and Z staff report are the same things that are in this staff report.
Do you have some?
Yeah, I think you can remand it back to planning permission. If you want to add things, like the attorney said, you need to re-advertise this. I think you would need to re-advertise it anyway to show that it's gonna be another public hearing at P and Z, which would be, in this case, there's six property owners, it's more of the newspaper notice and everything else. You can give some suggestions of what that might probably be considered. In this case, when they made the application, they were at this stage, so I suggested that they not go to that stage if they weren't there yet to come up with a conception. Now they're, maybe the elevations changed, but they're in a much more detailed, they were at twenty thousand feet, now they're at about two or three thousand feet. So that's something, right, P and Z didn't have that because they weren't ready at application time, they probably weren't that far along, you know, two weeks. So I think you, and Lisa and I talked about this today, that maybe you remanded back to them and see if there's more information that can be provided. I think it is re-nosed, that it's the same, it's the same as the same zoning case, it's all over again when we started, with ninety percent of the same information, you may change it.
Yeah, if y'all mind trying to change anything and make recommendations, well, if we would consider it work, if you like this better, you did that, here's the concern, this is not, this is very much out of the ordinary, okay, at least for general law cities. So the concern, very technically speaking, two eleven zero zero six and two eleven zero zero seven cover the process for zoning. Public hearings notice ten days prior to P and Z hearings. Public hearing number two notice fifteen days prior to city council hearings. It's one hearing for P and Z, one hearing for council. If it's the same one, technically, very, very strict reading of the statute, you don't need another public hearing for P and Z. You don't need another. Again, that's what makes these things so tricky when you wanna remand it. An abundance of caution would recommend the notice, because you have a situation where someone wants, they complain, hey, we didn't know about this, we didn't know about that, you didn't notice it, just to avoid that hassle, again, that's more, you know, time, money, and expense for the city to do that. So, but again, y'all are elected to not do what other people think you should do, or we think you should do. Carl can't tell you what to do, I can't tell you what to do, Lisa can't tell you what to do, y'all are elected to do what you think is best for the people. So if you think, if you think what's best for the people is to have P and Z hear this with some of the things they didn't have before, totally understand, to help effectuate that, and I think I hear Carl with me, we recommend, even though technically you may not have to do it, you will never go wrong giving quote-unquote "too much" notice. So I would encourage notice, just like you did before for the P and Z, I notice just like you did for the council meeting. So I would, if you, if you make a motion to remand it back to them, I would say include the re-nosed provisions.
Yeah, I'm under your mind, council, what's your special national, just designing and then those are five of them?
But I don't think planning and zoning have the information we are getting now, and that's why they are denying it, because they didn't have all of the information.
I understand.
And I rely on them.
I understand.
So I'm not trying to say yes or no, I'm just trying to say.
I'm under your mind, it's just words on which to write. All right, do I have any options?
I'm gonna make a motion to reject the, does that change from general business to planned development, based on our previous discussion?
Do you have a second?
I'll second. Man, man, more facts. Just, and y'all may know this, so yell me if you want to, so we've got a motion basically to deny the zoning, okay? That, if that, and I don't know whether it will or not, but if that passes, the motion tonight, there is no remand to P and Z, that will no longer be an option. Just, I just want everybody to be aware of.
Well, I want, I mean, with the, with the inclusion to provide updated information to P and Z.
Okay, what I would advise you to do is make a motion to remand it to P and Z.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was.
Right, that's why I want to make it really clear.
I was wondering, yeah. When I make a motion, it's.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I got it, because rules apply under procedure with the doctor by statute now, since we've got a motion and a second on the floor, technically, we have to go through the motion. If you don't wanna deny it, then we just, nobody votes for anything, but we technically have to go through the motions, since we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
So I'll make a motion, I'll revise my motion.
Well, first, we have to go through the motion itself.
With, motion second to deny it, is that clear to you?
Right.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Aye. That motion's done, do I have any other motion on the floor?
Sure. I'll make a motion to.
Remand.
Remand.
To the P and Z.
To the P and Z.
And comply with notice provisions.
And comply with.
All right, I've got a motion to remand it back to P and Z. I've got a second, any discussion? All in favor? Guys can catch?
I know, I'm trying to phrase my words, okay? I, I just, I think it's really important that when it goes back to P and Z, that it stays on topic in the general business of the planned development so that everybody is working on the same sheet of music. And I, I think we all are in agreement that we do want, we do rely on you guys, and I really appreciate it, and I know it's probably the toughest job out there, but please, please give this another thorough look.
A question real quick, is there any more things that you guys are working on in this? In other words, you had started on working on this, you didn't get it to us in time for them, and so now I'm just wondering, is there anything else out there before they go, you guys go back to them?
Yeah, I do, I mean, I'm not gonna say we're doing this, but.
Yes.
All right, I've got a motion, I've got a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So, we're clear to go back to P and Z. All right, now, six twenty-six. All right, Chief, you said we were the fire department here in the presentation, the management of the department organization, and I, all ones.
All right. See you, Mayor and Council, I think we're gonna kinda have a, not a question, I'm here. Sorry, everybody. As requested, you kinda wanted an update.
All right, that's what it is. The way we, the way we mess them up with batteries when you turn it back.
They eat up batteries.
All right, go ahead, Chiefs.
All right. As you requested, you wanna kinda update or kinda see where we have been and where we're going, so I put together here a small list of some of the things that we accomplished over the last year, and it's kinda, to me, it's some significant things that we, as a department, were able to accomplish. So as you see there at the top, as we go through this packet, there are some documents, a few documents that'll kinda support some of the things we're talking about. But you can see the first thing there at the top, we, obviously, we're able to establish and become a TCFP compliant department, we call a combination department. We're not a career department, but we're a combination department, and that's based on our, our staffing. We don't, you know, we don't have just all full-time staff, we do have a mixture, which we'll get into, or you can see down there, increased staffing. We started out with twelve when the integration kinda began, and we've grown it to twenty-three, and that twenty-three includes your full-time staff, part-time staff, and volunteers. Out of that twenty-three, you have six full-time, or full-time equivalent, you have fourteen part-time, and then three volunteers. Out of those twenty-three, we now have twenty that are TCFP, Texas Commission on Fire Protection, certified and/or EMT or paramedic.
Now, just for clarification for some of us that don't always understand, when you say they're that certified, so is that, that would be the same certification as any paid firefighter within any other paid fire department such as Rockwall or RALE or?
Dallas, Richardson, Garland, Irving Frisco.
So they have same certifications as?
Correct. And so those certifications range from basic firefighter all the way up to master firefighter, from driver operator to hazmat technician, technician to fire arson investigator, fire inspector. So we have a wide spectrum of individuals that have now gone out and achieved their certifications. We have three volunteers who we classify as a volunteer, non-certified, or they're currently enrolled in the State Firemen's and Fire Marshals Association Training Program. Training program takes a long time, but they've gotten to the point now where two of the three are actually in the process of challenging the Texas Commission on Fire Protection tests. So we've put, they've gone down a path, they've gone through the certification process with the State Firemen's and Fire Marshal Association, get their cert, their level one through five. They've completed that, so now they have to take a hazmat awareness and operations course through a fire academy, and once they do that, then they can actually challenge to sit and take the Texas Commission test. So we currently have two members that are in the process of that. So, once they complete that during this year, we'll only have one that currently is remaining as a volunteer without any type of certifications. As you all know, we accepted, we had six SAFER grants, that was a six full-time or full-time equivalent when we began the process. Obviously, everybody's very familiar with the integration of the two departments and the things that we had to accomplish. It was a lot of, there were a lot of items throughout the year that we had to, you know, timelines we had to meet, and I think we achieved ninety percent of those early. The one that we did wait a little bit on was the, the remaining cash balance from MCVFD, but we did that for a reason. The fact that we still were required to maintain their constitution and bylaws as a fire department, plus operate under the city's rules and regulations, policies, and procedures, so, and taxes, being a nonprofit, lots of things that we had to wait on, but eventually, we were able to bring that fifty-four thousand dollars over from MCVFD and was deposited into capital replacement funds or into the general funds, if I'm not mistaken. We also began the process with Tex, with TexDOT. TexDOT came in, as everybody knows, is widening the station, so we began the process of, and completed the assessment of Station One. We have had lots of conversations, we know that they're gonna not take away the whole, all the property, but they will take away our duty hut, our tiny home fire station there that we're proud of.
So Chief, we still haven't gotten an appraisal?
We've actually got a, got some, just received the packet, and we're in the process of reviewing it before we bring it to council, so that will be on our next, next meeting, next agenda. So we did, we just received that, and I've had some conversation with the reps in regards to that property, and also, as we move forward with getting TexDOT to go ahead and start maybe allowing us to begin our process for architects and things like that. So there's lots of movement, we're starting to move a little bit smoother now. What you see, the next one there, we received offer, so we're reviewing that. Received our first TCFP or Texas Commission on Fire Protection Compliance Inspection, if you see there in your next document, that's actually the official document that states that we went through our compliance inspection. We did have some minor violations, any council member that would like to see that, I'd be more than happy to give it to you, but it was in regards to policies, some things from when we originated, originally started in our policies and procedures that were approved by the commission in twenty eighteen, in April there, or October, sorry. When they were approved, we had some changes, NFA standards changes and things like that, so our minor violations were along those lines there. And there's, minor is exactly what it is, it's just a minor, you know, some upgrades or some different changes needed. So we achieved that, we got through that. We did implement a new annual physical agility test for our staff, so we all go through an annual PT test. In the beginning, we did not have that in there, you can see that in an example, or this is one of the policies that we've actually implemented over the year. Through that policy, on the second page here, you can see where we implemented and we revised it, and we have what we call a seven-event program that all our staff will go through annually to make sure that we are all fit for duty. It's, it's not an easy test, it's a tough test, so it's forced me to make sure I, you know, lose some weight. But anyway, so, then the next policy you see there, five hundred and three, we actually implemented a new hiring process, you know, we really didn't have a hiring process set, so now we have one that's in policy that states, this is the policy, or the process that we will go through anytime we have a new applicant come in, whether they're full-time, part-time, or volunteering, if we run all those members through the same process, so as we go down the road and years down the road, if we have a opening that comes up within the full-time staff, then if we were to bring somebody from the part-time staff, we've already been through the hiring process, it's a matter of paperwork and transition them over. But you can see there, the policy that we implemented. We also, Captain Griffith, Assistant Chief Murphy, we all come together and changed up our training program. They used to have four meetings a month, one business meeting and three training meetings a month as a volunteer fire department, and those are tough to meet, so we wanted, I want quality instead of quantity. And so we got together, had some discussions, and what you see in front of you is our new training schedule for twenty twenty. You'll notice that we have training every month, it's gonna be different topics, we have online CE trainings, that's target solutions as you see there, but we also have these things called quick drills. So this month, they have ten of them. On the back there, you'll see what quick drills means, or target solutions and quick drills. When we refer to quick drills, it's every month, it's issued via email or PDF, there's ten of them, and it, two of them will be policy review, so whether it's city policy or department policy that we've implemented, the responsibility of all staff to go through and do these quick drills, along with some type of EMS and then fire-related. Training is big, we like to train, and we're trying to implement our, or improve our program that we have. The program we had was not bad, there was nothing wrong with it, but we tried to come up with ways to make it even better than what we had, and this is our outcome. So they'll do not only CE solutions or training CE's online, but we also do hands-on. So we have one hands-on training meeting a month, and that's the first Tuesday of every month, is where everybody comes together and we'll focus on whatever training topic may be for that month. The next is a program, as you see, it says draft, looking at it, trying to come up with some other program to implement a community program, it's called the Safety Awareness for Everyone Safe. Hopefully, everybody has a copy of there, and I didn't miss anybody. But it's an opportunity to start trying to engage the community a little more, and maybe have some little fun competitions if we put this program together and come up with all the different courses that we can offer, is where we kinda have each community out there working hard or wanting to bring us in and have some, some training with them. And some of the programs that we would offer in outreach here is basic just station tours, people coming up wanting to see our tiny home, look at our big red sleds and play with the lights and sirens. Going in and taking the fire truck by birthday parties, we've done several of those over the summertime, where they call up and we'll go by and spend fifteen, twenty minutes there, hand out stickers or, or these plastic helmets and let the kids look at the fire trucks. Home safety surveys, those are free, it doesn't cost the citizens anything. Citizen has, feels like that they want us to come out, and those that are inspectors to come out and do an actual. to come out and do an actual home safety survey, we'll be more than happy to, free of charge, no cost. Neighborhood events, block parties, national night out's a big one. Wanted to get more of these communities involved with national night out, whether they do it on that night of or they have separate nights, which I've worked in cities where we'll have them for about a week-long or two-week period. And our goal is to make sure that we're out there and that we're participating with those events. Speaking at HOA meetings and then stop the bleed courses, CPR. I mean, there's numerous courses, fire extinguisher training. This is just a draft, and this is kind of a program of where we want to go in the future. So.
Do you guys ever change out smoke and alarm batteries for people?
We do. Yes, ma'am, we do. So they'll call us and we'll go out and make sure that whether it's batteries or if we have to, we've gone as far where we've gone and purchased some replacement smoke detectors from Home Depot, Lowe's, Walmart, wherever we can get them, and then replaced it for them. Because we want to make sure everybody has smoke detectors in all the required areas of their home. So we talked about the training program, kind of got ahead of myself with safety there. We did implement some new software, PS tracks is one of them. Our inventory was, we had an inventory. It's a lot of data entry in old Excel, so we were able to find a software now that will keep up with every bit of equipment that we have that you as council has, that this city has, that they own. Also allows us to do our daily checks. We do daily checks on our PPE that we wear. We also do it on our SCBAs, yourself-contained breathing apparatus, and our fire trucks. So this software will allow us to be able to document that and have great records now. Instead of good records, we'll have great records to where we can keep up with what's going on with expenditures. Target Solutions, already mentioned that one, that's our training CE's. So allows our guys to go on there. Target Solutions is a great company. They allow us to have fire EMS and law enforcement CE's for one flat rate, a package price. So everybody on the department has access to Target Solutions. So we do lots of training. Goals for 2021, implement the new community outreach program, safe. Begin the design and hopefully build the new McLennan Chisholm Fire Station One. That'll be a fun project. Goal is to have 100% TCFP or EMT paramedic staff as we move forward. Anybody that comes on or was to come on if we have any more part-time positions, they are required to be Texas Commission on Fire Protection certified, EMT or paramedic. And then a new volunteer program. We haven't had, you know, we've put it out there and we've tried to draw people in, and there hasn't been a big draw, or we haven't had people knocking on the doors to become a volunteer. And so some of the things I ask the staff is what should we do? What can we do to kind of hopefully maybe implement a new program? And one of them is looking at how we can have a volunteer program that may not, we, nobody in the community is knocking on the door to say, "I want to volunteer," so why not offer it up? Because we've had some contacts with people from Roy City, from Rockwall, from May Living Garland, May Living Fornie, that are young men and women. Several of them I've had recently just got fresh out of the military. And I, come on, what can we do type thing, put a program together. So it may be that we've put a program together where they're not really a benefit to us when a call comes in because of where they live, but we can require them to spend so many hours at the fire station every month to be a participating member, which is an additional body on shift for when we have those calls. So those are some of the things that we're looking at for 2021. If you have any questions on any of that above, I'm here.
Any questions for Chief? I don't know what you're doing here.
Yes, sir.
All right.
How's the condition of our vehicle?
Great. They cost me money. The, I'm actually looking at some other options that will, in the future, as we move along here, when it comes to maintenance. Now, I'm starting to put together some maintenance costs when it comes to these different apparatus, and I plan on bringing it before council if it becomes a continual problem, and looking at what other options we may have. But there were, everything's in service, everything is operational, but we've had, we've spent some money on some vehicle maintenance outside of our normal annual PMs.
Chief, is there a way to project with the next, you know, when we start talking budget talks here in a few months, is there a way for you to, looking at your crystal ball and see, give us a rough idea of what those ongoing costs may be?
I can give you the cost of what our, what we know, our annual PMs when it comes to the basic fluid changes, and then our pump testing and hose testing and ladder testing of those apparatus. When it comes to, you know, alternators going bad or high-pressure fuel, oil pumps going out on a truck, I can go back and look at what we've spent, but I can't predict, is that going to happen again or not? But I can give you an idea of what we've spent over the last year, and that's something I'll definitely bring before council as we start preparing for budget talks here in the next month or two.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
All right. Now we're going to move to 6.7, discussion of National Guard and authorized fire chief to accept a clot share grant for an amount of $20,000 dollars from the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service for fire rescue equipment.
Yes, so, as we, yes, I was just, I didn't read a copy. So we recently found out, you'll see on there, the date says November 25, 2019. In this transition period, working with the forestry service and other entities out there that we deal with, somehow, some way, emails got crossed. They were using an old email we don't use anymore. Luckily, somebody from the forestry service said, "Let me take one more step, reach out." We happened to be at the fire station the other day, and the phone rang, and it was this, it was an individual that says they're from the forestry service, "We offered you a grant, we haven't received your acceptance letter." We didn't know where it was, so they re-sent it to us and gave us some time. So that's why I bring this before you today. It was last week we received it. This grant is up to 75% payout, so up to $20,000 is what Texas Forestry Service is offering us. Right now, I have staff looking at what can we, what are our biggest needs? And right now, to kind of help us move forward and have a better plan when it comes to the cancer initiative, having two sets of gear and making sure we have replacement gear in service, so when we do have those exposures, one of the things that we're looking at is possibly purchasing seven sets of new gear right now, just for the full-time staff that would give them their two sets. And this money would go towards the purchase of that new gear, and they would pay up to $20,000. So I'm asking council for approval to accept that. We will put in a request to Texas Forestry Service if we decide to go with the PPE, the bunker here. We will put in a request to them for them to say, "Yeah, that's approved on this particular grant."
So make a motion to authorize the chief to accept a clot share grant in the amount of $20,000 from the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service for fire rescue.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on it? If not, all in favor? Aye.
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 Show that unanimous?
Thank you.
6.8, discussion of fireworks and their use in the city.
Thanks, Mayor. Obviously, this has been a hot topic for years and years. You know, I just, I wanted to see what the, and the reason I'm bringing it up is I've had a couple of citizens raise some concerns about shooting fireworks and when they were being shot, and, you know, is this something that we as a council want to start to look at addressing in some way? You know, again, I am pro fireworks, rah rah USA, that sort of thing, but I don't want to burn down somebody's house because of carelessness either.
Mr. Rogers, just, this is something is, yeah, yeah, and this is something that I do have, that's been the top of our list right now. We have went through and reworked the, started working, reworking the ordinances and codes, adopting new codes. So one of the things is we're going to come before council here in the near future is advancing or adopting the 2015 Fire Code and all the other codes associated with it. And one of the topics that I have, two big topics, fireworks and sprinkler systems when it comes to commercial building size and all that that we don't currently have in play. So this is something that we will bring before council, and it's something that council can start thinking about, you know. I'm not against fireworks, I'm not afraid of fireworks at all. I enjoy fireworks, but when it comes to subdivision, and I'll use Sonoma Verde as a prime example, as close as those lots are, I think it's crazy that somebody can go in their backyard there and shoot a six-inch or eight-inch artillery shell out of their backyard. It just, it's just not safe. So those are some of the things that council may want to start looking at, is how could we come up with something that would still allow people that live out here on these big wide open spaces to be able to do that, but do it in a controlled manner when it comes to these subdivisions?
So will you, Chief, will you come to the council with a list of recommendations on, or proposals of what we could implement?
Absolutely. And if you have any recommendations as council that you think you would like for me to look at for options, by all means, you know, please send them to me, but that would be the, the goal, is to bring you some options to look at.
What would you like to respond?
Anytime. I know we're looking in the next couple of months to hopefully come before council when it comes to adopting the codes.
Before then.
We, you know, we had an issue last year with fireworks. One displayed, and it was, it was a professional display, and it tells you how even professional displays can go south very quickly. We were able to control it, regroup, and have them reset, but we, it still caused some problems. It caused some friction with a lot of people that lived in that area. And so it's a concern, you know. We're going to have them relocate that show. I don't think it needs to be where it is anymore. It's not safe. But those are the things that we look at in the future. And it was a professional show again.
And there are, there are other cities with ordinances based on how their housing is set up in their cities to regulate that. For the obvious reasons, I mean, you're very gracious in what you said, but nobody wants to go, nobody wants to burn down a city for a few fireworks.
So my apologies, I was just wanted to give you the heads up that we have discussed that and continue to work on it.
One step ahead of me. Great. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're down to 6.8. We're going to move to 7.1, recess into executive session. In accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, brackets number two, consultation with city attorney on a matter that's the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Discreet Rules of Professional Conduct and State law of Texas, where we can fix conflicts with this chapter regarding consideration of entering into a development agreement with Mohammed Palami representing MFS Group LLC related to property generally located south of intersection 550 and State Highway 205. It is 8:10, we are in session.
I do good for the Rice Krispies commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Completely agree.
Well, I'm going to send you an email tomorrow, and I'll talk to you all about it. Essentially, what I need to do is give you a definition of general business, the national form of law, general business, and then just some different things. I'll see what you want to do.
Ow.
I think that's a great idea.
This is the best. I'm going to say something about this. I'm working on it.
He should be, unless he's snuck out already, he wasn't here.
Forgot about you.
Check the hallway.
Well, my goal is maybe to have, well, I'm going to have, absolutely, I'm taking the form for the grant now. No, that, well, yeah, I'll take that too, sir. Yes, yes, absolutely. Am I done? You need me? I'm not, I'm going to go and see my grandkid. But I'll stay, I'll hang out. We need some editing out here.
Put everything, put everything. I need one minute.
Sir.
How are you?
Good, sir, how are you?
James Corneau. So I see you're a marshal and a prosecutor too?
Yeah, so I was in law enforcement before I came here, so I was, so I'll be about one month, I guess, you will call me.
So the city built your commission?
Yes, so we have the Fire Marshal's Office, so we actually, we established that in the beginning, so.
I'm a police officer in Dallas.
Oh, nice.
29 years.
Not retiring yet?
Yeah. City council, you're here.
Oh, very nice.
And I wanted to hear your report, and that's part of the reason I was here at that.
Oh, yeah. Got any questions?
Kind of, so are you the code enforcement officer also?
Just, well, the council has just, over the past few months, have decided to slide code enforcement under the fire department. So a week ago, I went, back then, I said, "Oh, let me find a class, I'll get in." So a week ago, I went to the class. I didn't need to because being a peace officer, you don't have to, you don't have to go to code, but, I mean, I'm not a code guy, never, I'm not being a code guy, but I want to have a better understanding. So I went to Meske and attended the class. So recently, just got certified as a code compliance officer. So I will be the one that starts that process, and I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to try to make sure I'm out there, you know, and when I have downtime... When I have downtime, I drive a city vehicle, get out there and look, but, you know, by now I'm on a reactive, not proactive.
And I get it. I mean, because obviously, one of my biggest things, being on the council here since then, I'm still waiting for the police officers. You're a police officer.
That's correct.
Whether it's speeding or whatever.
Absolutely. No, and I've tried to explain at the council when we established fire marshal's office, you know, they they saw this. When you're a master peace officer, you're God. You've been on the CIP, I left FDP, I worked, I worked my way up. Now I'm used to playing firemen towards the end of my career, tough thing. But I can't go out in force in any and all of the orders. If I wanted to go out here in my vehicle and make a traffic stop, I can make the traffic stop.
Money in fire vehicles.
Well, yeah, you know what I tell people, you know, because I was always in the DPS concept, so I was in HEAT. You know, I started Rockwell many years ago when I was in HEAT and then FDP, yes, so I worked my way up the ranks. So I've made those traffic stops and we've made that, you know, burglary call and a fire truck with three men on it because it was just the way we operated, you know, and people would say, you called for somebody in this house and here comes a fire truck and guys jump off. It was always fun to see, you know. Here's here comes the cross dressers is what I used to say. But anyway, yeah, getting them to explain it, you know, I can't enforce that. You have a law enforcement officer in this.
Right, and you can kind of lead it towards which I would love to see is some of your firefighters can commission these officers to kind of create a.
Say that now, once it's it's funny to say that. I have three. I wish, and it's something I'm going to address here in the very, very, very near future, maybe even by this next budget.
Yes, sir. My house, just get together for another code player.
Yeah, come.
Keep me updated. I don't, I'm so, but I'll keep you updated on the precinct thing. Yeah, we gotta.
Yeah, yeah.
I really wanted to get back to.
Yeah, you're gonna be precinct too, yeah. I want to make that. Okay, all right. Good, good. Good to see, sir. We've really been talking. I contacted a couple of schools. I know Marshals, you know, you're over in Mesquite. I went there in ninety. That's what I went through, but because we had something we're doing with the call fire department schedule. And Greenville or Hunt County was doing it, so I contacted, I just went blank. Anyway, they're not doing the fire department schedule right now, but I have three, three of my counties, they want to do this. They want to go get it because they want to know, they they know the future of this place. And I'm a big believer in the DPS concept and I believe you get the most bang for your buck in a small community. So I've done, I spent all my career, most of my ninety-two of my career, getting the DPS concept. So it will work, but I have something they're wanting to go through. It's expensive. It's going to cost them about twenty-three hundred bucks to go out here. I said I will do my part to help them maybe get the equipment, the sand rounds and all the, you know, the ammo and things like that, so. And if I don't, if we're not able to do it this go around, then, you know, one of the things I want to talk to council about in the future for this next budget is hey. Well, now, because we know that's coming one day, that they're going to say. See, sir, or it's going to be yours.
We've known that because it's forever. You can get it in the sheriff's department, you can get it in the.
Correct. Same thing we did over there for years of fate, now fate has their own. But that's why they went because it got to the point where it was going to cost them so much money, they went for timeout.
And it is expensive to do, and back then it's expensive because they, you're paying cover all the costs, the insurance, everything.
That's what you. Yes, sir.
And I totally, I'm trying to reimburse him back to the county for the hours, eight hours, and sixteen and twenty-four. Right there in the Ford, in the Ford, but the idea, you've got some of your firefighters that want to go. Because we do that, I work with this, I'm a fire officer, and I've been out there, ten years, but I patrol the main hall, northeast division. And we have DFD, we have three or four guys in DFD in our.
Yeah, I've known for years.
Once they get their ECO license, they're done.
Yeah, they're they're on their own, doubtless they're going to carry them, but.
Yeah, they carry them over there.
And see, that's the thing, I told you guys, we've carried here. I've carried them in my heart. I have my problem and then I've talked to, and I'll go to talk to again. She called her over in Hunt County. Because I'd want these guys to go through it. I want them to get trained. I can't train them all. Yeah, I'm a police officer, but I can't train them all myself. So I want to work it whether it's HEAT, thirty-fourth city, if somebody would be willing to work with us for these guys, you know, if they have to. You know, maybe you're not over there where they go through a training course. Now we've got guys in our just certified ECO. Actually have experience, so if that time comes.
Right. It's a slow process, but it's something that I've tried to work on going here.
I think it's coming.
I just, I mean. It's just the time. Number one thing you see is that, excuse me, you're building a house.
You want to have a lot of it?
And you continue to have.
And it's not slowing down.
It is a point, it's like, you know, and it's just nice to see. Drive through your neighborhood.
It's a piece of mind.
Case.
This is.
The first time it was pretty big rug too.
Well, I said, as it should be, because it was made up, it just didn't, even conversation, it was like.
That's what you need to do, you know. Sheriff calls, whether it be also purple alarms.
Or fifty to sixty radio calls a month. That's radio calls. That's not working traffic. That's not doing actual patrol of the neighborhood. That's regular calls, so. And that's gone up since the last time I looked at it. I think they're they're up in retirement, just in the community. It's two, two entities in municipality that is revenue driven, code enforcement, code compliance. Or UMS, that's all their laws, right. Those are the, those are the three, those are the two main. So, you know, it's it's something, it's nice to hear that somebody has that mindset and is already looking at it because we know. And they were very, I mean, they, it was very grateful that they came to neighbors when they had to talk to the audience, start looking at this in the future. Now, great, we do, and that's something that leaves us like, you shouldn't have to make decisions. Can you pay how much? I don't know what it'd be, but you're going to pay all that money, you're paid the guy who's very entity. Good guys on there, know a lot of them, but you're going to pay them if the city had no command and control of that individual, of that equipment. And our experience, because well, as if they had before the highway, the sheriff's department, they couldn't call the car. City alone. So you want to get back into what the big thing was with the fire department back in all the streets, definitely football. Do you want to go back in those things there? There's nothing against service department now.
Yeah, I mean, it is. I'm trying to think back to this, because we have one police officer, so that makes it eight hours a day. It's around ninety thousand a year. That was years ago, so now it's even more.
Yeah. So you've got to think of a real car, you're going to spend, you're going to spend probably fifty, fifty to sixty thousand on patrol car. That's fully decked out. That's, that's what you're, that's everything. That's your radio, that's your camera system, that's, that's everything, you know. That's, that's what you're going to spend on average on that patrol car.
Yeah, that's more for cowboys.
Yeah, and so actually to understand when they start looking at what all we're going to have, we're going to spend it on. Now, it's obviously, this, this is how the car, how many, about, about three, maybe about two, you know. Because I can tell you, we bought three and within the first week of all of them suckers coming from a company that's no longer business. I think two of them went to the shop immediately. Immediately, no lights, half of the work, half didn't. Oh, yeah, resumes, so that's all we had, you know, so we had to adapt and go. Yeah, but yeah, it's, 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 it's coming. It's, it's, I do, I think it's coming.
I think it needs to be, and I think, I think the fire departments have done really well, seeing all this and stuff like that.
It's established.
Only the city government's history of safety, you know, they want police, they want fire, they want traffic.
That's it.
Those are the number three of things. Police, fire, correct. You know, and that is it. That's what we've seen.
Do you have a group of citizens, do you have any others that don't have that same concern or same thought process in regards to what your city is, you know, that they understand that law enforcement is important?
Well, I have a wonderful member of justice who's been trying to be a child.
Right.
The council too, and, yeah, that and to get their roads fixed.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's the reason.
So many havoc roads too.
Well, we live on a private, I live on a.
Okay.
And so we live on private road. The reason I'm bringing for council here to go is because I've been announcing this before, that's like, no, we can't fix it again. I'm running council, I'm gonna sit on the seat, I'm gonna operate it.
Yeah, because, and that's it, you know, it's. It's tough, it's not, yes, and it's not easy because there's certainly certain amount, they say you can spend public bucks. We talked to a group recently, I thought, in regards to maybe working somehow when a city has engineer.
We've tried to do all these challenges for the proper route of county standards, you know, take over. Seeing things, you draw every different angle. We just haven't had much success.
Because I, I mean, that's the thing, as the city roads come up to a standard or a certain, and my thing was when it comes to what's standard, curb got it, forget it. But if you say bring it back to the current standard, what it was, what it is.
And have actual things say, here.
Well, that makes it a whole bunch of curb go.
This thing is, it's not only one of this council, it's council before that, it's councils ago. They got it against me.
Yeah, yeah.
And the cutter against me, so no, we don't, no, we don't, whoa, I lost. First town hall meeting, gets up, goes, ah, reader, I'm gonna protect you guys. Funny how my neighbors even go.
Isn't it funny how they do that? It's like you said. Yeah, that's me, huh?
And then I told council, we always do not set so high a rate for short load. Cannot control the city, and guess what? It's too deep of a load.
See what you're building.
Two thousand dollars. If Kingsbridge many though.
Tax rate fifteen. Majority of it exists. That's.
I set up the city's operating.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great bill. Absolutely, but.
You didn't get any service, you didn't get any real service out there, and you're still struggling because you don't have police officers. You don't have that stuff and yet you can't raise taxes much at all because the legislature's got gaps and all that stuff, so. You'll never, I don't know, how you can cause a rollback.
But like, we got by this with the legislature, so now we think instead enough to where if they need to, if they want to next, they're going to. Then they'll be able to do it with not with less stress than what they did last year. But it's, you know, if you keep talking about them police officers, that's kind of one of the things, talk to the guys, just, you know, hire one or two or three. And then you have the shift guys, defense guys that are the cover guys, and those guys are off sick, they're making pictures. Those guys, the shift guys, there's so many ways to set it up.
You can get the backup of the council.
Absolutely, and you've got, so there's so many ways to set up a base to where you can do it. It's, you keep the cost down as much as possible, and if you're going to have an initial upfront cost, there's no way around it. You're going to have to, you've got to get it quick, but, but once you do that, it's easy, it's going to be easier to maintain it for a while. And then you make adjustments as it progresses. I've thought about it for a long time and I told the council, I heard these, when they talked about his department, it's like. You really should focus over here, you know.
No, they want to get a lot of stuff.
Yeah. All right, well, hey, pleasure meeting you, man. Anytime, come by and see me, um, but, uh, yeah, I would go to some things, you know, I'd love to start talking to a group of citizens as they belong and see what their thoughts are. Because, you know, it will happen.
Yeah.
No doubt. It's, it's going to.
Rock was the fastest growing, one of the fastest growing states. It's the richest, yeah, country, state of Texas, smallest county in Texas.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, it just means, my whole deal is when we jump into the tax, it's going to be a city.
Yes, it'd be a city. We're not playing city anymore. We're going to be one now, so now that we are, let's be one. City's little, it's really, too, they do.
They're moving to California and everywhere else where they have.
City's a regular people in California.
And they can't believe they don't have this and that.
Yeah, so. So they're here all the time. You'll see, but they're not dedicated. They're county.
You call them, you don't count.
They're county.
And then you have, you have a fire department, you're in a fire department.
And what else service do we have? That's it. You got traffic service, you do it with the director. It doesn't come in city and your waters by this company, this company, this company.
Oh, no, I know.
Hey, it's a pleasure.
Thanks, yeah, very nice, thank you.
Have a good one.
You have a plan to go home?
Sir?
You have a plan to go home or is he coming back? Was he in the executive session?
I think he may be in there. I think, I think. I don't remember seeing him go back.
All right. The time is eight thirty-six. We are back to executive session. There's no action, technical section. We will move on to.
Right, I was just going to thank, publicly thank the fire department for helping with that. They were great stewards of fire and very instructional to the young ladies on how to properly dispose of the flag, so thank you very much. And as, as you said, mayor, it went off really well. The other thing I'd like to talk about is our lunch and learn is on Tuesday and our DA, Ken McCall Pepper, is going to be here to speak with us for about an hour, so please let your friends know. I think it'll, it's going to be a really informative session. She'll talk about the crime statistics here in Rockwell County and even go into things that we don't even know go on here. So I've heard her speak at other venues and it's always very informative, so it's on Tuesday, February fourth, from twelve to one, right here at city hall. Thank you.
If you've never heard Ken speak before, some of the things she talks about when it comes to our county or our aisle. Mr. Hoss?
Uh, no reports, sir.
Ms. Jordan?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Um, Mr. Blinn's not here, so. Um, Mr. Blinn is not here, so he doesn't have anything. Um, Rose Consolino, did you have anything from the last meeting?
Uh, no, we didn't have, I don't think we had anything to update.
I don't think there's any changes that are gonna affect us at this time.
All right, Mr. Don, Rose or nothing? Okay. Well, it is eight forty-two. We've gone through everything in the agenda tonight, so maybe a jerk. Go home and enjoy your family.